Welcome to Just Thinking. This is Mary Greendale. The title of this show grew out of a lifetime of curiosity about many different subjects. Some local, some global, and some in between. For each show, I will open with my thoughts and then bring on guests who explore the subject in greater detail. I hope the show inspires healthy discussions on camera and among viewers. To me, the sky's the limit when we are just thinking. Welcome. Did you know there's a town meeting on October 30th? And there are 18 articles on the warrant. Today, I have Town Administrator Jeff Ritter and Selectment Chair Kevin Conley with me to discuss the major articles. There are some articles that are routine housekeeping that we will just skip. Article 5 is going to be a purchase of capital equipment for over $800,000. Article 6 has a fund transfer. Article 7, community preservation funding for the Eight Arch Bridge. 8 and 9 are water main replacements for a cost of about $1.7 million. 10 and 11 do repairs to water storage tanks and cleaning tanks. 12 is a bylaw change. 13 are library repairs. 14, rail trail maintenance for $5,000. Temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana facilities. And there are a couple of private petitions for alcohol license and curbside pickup of trash for condos. One other thing that won't be on the warrant but is also going on is there is a public auction of some land being sold. So we will try to cover all of those things during this conversation. So, gentlemen, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know, appreciate it. All right, so let's start with the capital budget. We're just going to jump down there. You've obviously got a bunch of different pieces of equipment that the different departments want. Some of it's school-related. So Jeff, you want to just quickly, you don't necessarily go through the items of them, but quickly, how did you come to the conclusion that these were the things that we needed to get this time around?
Well, one of the things that happened was that the town hall door replacement project was actually on the warrant in May. But when the motion was made on Town Meeting floor, it, for some reason, it got dropped from the motion.
The door?
No, no, no. The funding for the door project got dropped from the motion. So we had to go back and revisit that. But the doors are at least 25 years old on the building, and they need to be replaced. And of course, we're going to be really sensitive to the historic nature of the doors, and we're on the precipice of going out to bid for that. The pickup truck for the Highway Department with plow is much needed for the upcoming snow season. They plan, if approved by Town Meeting, they'll immediately order that, and it'll be probably in sometime before Christmas. So they'll be ready to plow with that pickup truck. The next two items are a fingerprint machine for the Police Department at $17,245. And actually, there is an error in the warrant. It should be three, two police vehicles instead of three. So we'll make that correction on Town Meeting floor. Since we're reducing the scope of the article, that's permissible. If we wanted to go to four.
Yeah, you can't do that.
You can't do that. But we can reduce it. Luckily, it worked out.
Does the price remain the same at 77?
Yes.
So it's two for 36 or whatever it is each?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, when we were going to the police accreditation ceremonies in Dover last week, I was with the police chief and several of his officers, and I mentioned that we have three vehicles in the warrant.
And their eyes lit up.
And their eyes lit up. That means we can buy our motorcycle?
Yeah. There we go, guys. It might be the only way to get through the center of town right now.
It is tough.
It is tough right now. The sound system at the high school, you don't need to tell me about that one, but the public may be interested. It's just old.
I can just tell you that this is for the auditorium.
Yeah, it's old up there. I mean, it's, anybody who puts on productions up there knows what that's about. You did establish a capital committee, right? The Finance Committee did.
It was determined that the Finance Committee can designate a subcommittee of the Finance Committee to serve as the Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay, so is that in place?
And that's the direction they're heading.
Okay, they haven't put it in place yet, so it wasn't involved in this kind of conclusion?
No.
Okay. And this was just based on conversations among all of your departments and the Finance Committee?
Yeah, we sent out the message to the departments sometime in August or early September about any capital needs that you have in anticipation of the upcoming special town meeting. And this is the result of the synthesis, I guess, of all the projects that are out there.
I think it's important to have a capital committee together to go over the list, perhaps start from a five-year down to one year. And the key is to get on year number five and have it increase down four, three, two, one. But the Capital Committee has to be flexible in needs to meet what needs arise that weren't foreseen.
Yeah.
And it also should be a percentage to go towards maintenance, because if you buy a fire truck for a million dollars and don't maintain it, it's not going to last very long.
Can we talk about buildings and maintenance?
Sure.
Is that okay? No, I'm only kidding you. I'm only kidding you, but it remains as, I have always, not always, but I used to be on a campaign to do an entirely separate committee, which Finance Committee hated the idea of. But it's basically, it is basically that maintenance account kind of thing, and they're in charge of managing the money that manages, that goes into all of the maintenance of all of the buildings to make sure that it gets done, rather than the money gets funneled off to some other need.
Well, hopefully, it'll be capital and maintenance. My goal is 4% of the budget, 1% of capital, so 401, similar to, I believe, the town of Arlington does, which is being held out as an example for the rest of the state.
Good.
So if I could just jump in.
Sure.
One other thing on this. This represents a large number, this capital budget.
Yeah.
It's $826,890. That's a lot of money. And to your point about maintenance of buildings, a lot of that is tied to the economy. And we noticed in the, around 2006, '07, '08, at the recession, with that recession, buildings and maintenance of buildings were the first thing that were reduced.
Took off.
Now, what I'm faced with now is catching up from that time period and putting money into buildings and doing some preventative maintenance. And you'll see some more of that in the warrant.
Okay, sounds good to me. All right, so just explain the fund transfer to affect the tax rate.
This is going to be, the Finance Committee voted last night to indefinitely postpone this article.
Okay. All right. What was the goal?
If there was a change in the tax rate, then you could make an adjustment to it through an appropriation.
All right, the Community Preservation Committee report.
Yes. One of my favorite topics, as I'm sure your favorite topic is as well. The Eight Arch Bridge Committee was appointed. They went out to bid, and they received bids approximately 30 days ago. And the low bid came in $200,000 over what was expected.
And the high bid came in way high, over a million dollars, which is like, wow.
Right. So we did our due diligence and looked at the engineering piece of it, and this will represent a complete project for the Eight Arch Bridge, including railings, which was really important. So I'm really delighted that the Community Preservation Committee has decided to fund it, because it's going to bring the ball over the goal line and have that completed by next spring, which would be obviously wonderful.
Big party!
Yeah.
Big party! Okay, I'll make sure we do that. All right, so 8 and 9 are also capital improvements, really, but water main replacement, construction, design. So what's the Water Department doing?
So the Water Department, again, I have to applaud the efforts of the DPW and the Water Department and the Highway Department for all the things that they have been doing for the town. But this one here is specifically targeted at the Water Department. And what it contemplates doing is doing some replacement of water mains on Cedar Street, on Sherrill Lane, on Turner Road, and a water extension on Hamlin Road and Forest Park Drive for a total of $1.35 million. And this is all coming out of the water surplus retained earnings. So it's not affecting our free cash, or it's not affecting any of the other reserves that we have. It's all driven through the.
It's a savings account.
Right, through the Water Department.
Right.
And so Sean Reese, our DPW director, is really great about taking a proactive approach about, you know, replacing water mains and maintaining the system. This is really important, because, of course, I hadn't been here during the history of the Water Department, but it's refreshing that he's taking a lead like this. And the payers should be really happy in the end.
Is there, how do you pick the towns? I mean, the towns, the streets? How does he determine which streets are.
He has a list, and.
Checks it twice.
He just, like, sends it around, no.
He gives an analysis of how many breaks it's had in the road and what's going on with the road.
And then is this also compatible with you folks in the Highway Department doing their work at the same time? Is it part of that kind of relationship?
We try to make it even broader than that, yes.
Okay.
We don't want to put in a water main and then dig up the road the next day.
Exactly.
Right? So we're trying to make a broader approach by including the utilities in there as well.
So ComGas.
So Comcast, Verizon, Eversource, if they're going to be putting in a gas line, we try to coordinate that whole process.
Good.
So the underground utilities are addressed first, and then they go in, they reclaim the road and resurface it.
Great.
That's the coordinated approach, and it's actually working out very well.
That sounds wonderful. I see the water main replacement on, also, there's this piece that's coming down on Winter Street?
Mm-hmm.
And Ashland, from Ashland Street to Washington Street.
Right, so for the benefit of the public, Article 8 is actually the actual water main replacement.
Okay.
But before you get to the water main replacement, you need to do a design.
Get a design.
Of the project.
Got it.
So I think last year sometime, Article 8 was in the design phase, and we got funding to design it and go out to bid. And now Article 8 is actually the construction. Article 9 is the replacement, is the design cost for that project.
Okay.
And then probably in a year from now, you'll see a construction cost.
I see. So this is the first step.
Yep, and it's for about 10,600 linear feet on Winter Street.
Wow. Boy, can you imagine?
$78,000.
Can you imagine that tie-up? When does that stretch? Okay, Hopping Brook's water storage tank aeration and vent installation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What is that?
So we have a water tank, a large water tank on Hopping Brook Road. And in order for the water quality to be sustained to DEP standards, it has to be periodically circulated. So there's like a large circulating kind of mechanism inside the tank that will do that. Keeps the chemicals moving and the water pure, is my.
I think because that tank is the lowest tank in town, so it's used less, because the pressure comes out of tanks that are on higher elevation. So that's not used as much, so it has to be maintained more.
So it's kind of just stirring it up?
Stirring it up and removing the volatile organic compounds, or VOCs.
Okay, okay. I know, having lived out in that area, there were problems out there, but I know you're right. All right, that's good. And then we're going to, clean water tanks. How can you go wrong? You know? Really? Who wants a dirty water tank?
Well, they do accumulate.
Sure.
Material, even though it's water, clean water, it's still, they're active.
Yeah, I know, and the little minerals and all that. Happy who.
Anguines is a big word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection requires communities to, every five years, make sure that their water tanks are cleaned.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing here.
Do we do them all at once, though? I mean, or can it be on a, I am just asking, just.
This one is contemplating doing it all at once. So that way, there, we know five years from now.
That you've got to do them all.
And we could put that into our capital plan.
Okay.
That we're looking at doing our tank cleaning again in five years.
All right. All right, so 43D. I honestly thought this was a priority for sort of an expedited permitting process, but I thought we had already done this.
Yes, in 2013, apparently, the town meeting had voted to adopt 43D, but there were certain things that had to be accomplished, certain thresholds that had to occur, and those were not met.
Okay.
So we have to do it over again.
Okay.
And what this does is, by adopting 43D, it will allow the town to designate the town planner to be the primary contact person for filing inter-agency permitting board applications for the Hopping Brook Industrial Park. So this is one of our economic development activities that are out there, that are working in the background, that we're trying to make it as, within guidelines and within regulations, as easily and expedited as possible when they're submitting a permit for application. And there's a certain sunset period that it has to be completed by, and I think it's 90 days. So instead of being a protracted discussion for six months or nine months on a project, this condenses it down to like 60, 90 days.
90 days, it's nice.
90 days. And then, so we're trying to be proactive here, and it's so critically important that we diversify our tax base as much as we can.
Let me ask you, again, this is just to the economic development piece, but do they, in that industrial park, is it, continue to be a major issue, the waste management issue, continue to be a major obstacle for development?
Sewers are definitely town-wide. There's two edges to that sort, right? I mean, sewers would definitely encourage economic development, all types of economic development.
No, I'm not talking, I did not, I did not say the word sewer.
I did.
I did not.
An industrial wastewater treatment facility.
Exactly.
Got it.
You know, has anything been done or contemplated about just doing one single treatment thingy there for that park?
Based on the information that I've heard, is that the economics don't work.
Okay.
They have talked about it.
They have talked about it, but the economics just aren't there to make it work.
Okay.
Unless Amazon were to locate there.
Well, there you go. Are we putting in a bid?
No.
No? Okay, then that's not going to happen.
Keep me honest.
All right, so library roof and repairs to the HVAC system?
Right, so again, this is part of our proactive approach. Last year, we took a proactive approach and funded a new heating plant for the library, which was approximately 30 years old, I think.
Yeah.
So I approached the Finance Committee and said, can we take a proactive approach? Instead of having to come to you in an emergency circumstances when the boiler had died, let's take a proactive approach, let's get rid of the old boiler, and let's put a new one in. And we did that last winter. This is similar exercise. We're taking a proactive approach. We know the HVAC system on the roof of the library is probably 25 years old, and we know that the roof, although it has been repaired and patched many, many times over the years, this is an approach to actually reshingle the entire roof and get underneath the shingles and make sure that the studs are in good shape and that, you know, the two-by-fours and all that, the decking.
Yeah, yeah.
The decking is in good shape. So what this article would do, it's a relatively small amount of money, it's $15,000, but this is a fairly technical field, preparing bid specifications for roofing, and you've got to get it right. You have to have somebody on the hook who's responsible for it if it goes wrong. So this will fund the engagement of a consulting services to develop the bid specifications.
Okay. I think it's been actually over 30 years, if that's original.
Yeah.
You know, because it was 1984.
The HVAC?
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
So, I mean, you're talking about on its last legs.
Exactly. So you don't want to wake up next July, and it's not working.
That's what happened to my car.
So.
Yep. Don't have that car now. Anyway, rail trail maintenance. Okay, so I know that there's at least one FinCom member who has nightmares about the fact that the maintenance of the rail trail is going to become, you know, some long-term debt obligation for the town, and we're always, it's just going to, this is inching its way up to that kind of problem. So what is this specifically for?
This is specifically for providing $5,100 to purchase some equipment for volunteers to maintain the trail. The equipment will be town property, it will be stored on town property, it will be available to the Department of Public Works to use as needed. But instead of you going out with your weed whacker and your personal equipment and property.
God bless Robert Wideenack. How many has he gone through?
A few.
I think he said five.
You know, weed whackers, chainsaws, those kinds of things.
So it's like, it's like anything else. You have a lot of really talented volunteers, but you've got to give them the tools, literally, to do the job.
In this case, yeah. Okay. All right, and this is, what, one of those little ride-on cart kinds of things, or is this just tools, or is this?
Isn't it a crosswind, a golf cart and ATV?
It's something.
Somebody carry the equipment up and down the trail?
Up and down.
Or other material is needed.
Yeah.
They're also going to put a small shed on the Department of Public Works.
Good idea.
Land to park the vehicle. It's like a golf cart.
Yes.
But instead of having to walk the trail with your weed whacker.
Well, yeah, all the time. I mean, they get exhausted before they even get there.
Yeah, I mean, it's six and a half miles, roughly.
Yeah, yeah. And it's so nice. Okay. All right, let's talk about the one that everybody will be interested in, and that is the temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments. And this is to sell, retail sales of marijuana if and when and whatever the state of Massachusetts finally figures out how we're going to do that.
Correct.
Right?
So recreational marijuana only. And as you recall, last May, we had an article at Town Meeting that was submitted by petition banning the sale of recreational, and that was approved. That was followed by a ballot question mirroring that article, and that was approved. And that was in May. Sometime in August, the legislature decided to change the criteria through the Attorney General's office about how recreational marijuana distribution centers are permitted. So what they said was that the article that appeared at Town Meeting by petition was not a bylaw. It was just a sense of the meeting or a sense of the community. Therefore, it was ruled out of order by the.
Okay.
So then, so what this article will do, and you'll see if you read the newspapers, that many, many, many communities.
Yeah, they are doing it.
Are going through the same process.
Right.
This is going to shut the door on any recreational sales of marijuana in Holliston until at least December 31st of 2018. So it's roughly a year out. So we're going to see follow-up action, probably by the Planning Board and others, between now and certainly in next May or next October, probably, we have two more bites at the apple to get this right. Hopefully, we'll get it right in May. If not, then we'll do it next October. And then, again, the provision will sunset on December 31st. We'll have zoning in place. Hopefully, we can identify areas in town that might qualify for that activity.
I think a few towns around us have already passed ordinances, not looking forward to recreational marijuana facilities. Framingham has turned it down, Milford has turned it down, and quite a few others have. Hopkinton has, I think Ashland has, and the state government is really in a flux of what they're going to do with it. One-third thought you might have had is, you could only participate in the revenues if you participate in the resale.
Right.
And another thought was that I had heard that it's going to be a percentage of your alcohol permits. If you have four alcohol permits, you may have to have one recreational marijuana, but they're discussing that and don't know when that's going to come out and be law.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's an unfolding thing. And, you know, I believe that 10 years from now, this will be like ancient, ancient histories, just like days of going from prohibition to selling them in six different places in town, you know? But right now, you do want to get it right. It's also like, I remember when they first came out with the bylaws that you would impose for adult entertainment and adult, you know, audio and visual kinds of things and stuff like that. And, you know, every town figured out a way to do it so that it accommodated the law, but with a little cleverness to it, so it didn't become an issue.
Also, yeah, similar to the, also the cell tower debate, when that occurred.
Oh, when it first started.
When it first started.
Oh, my god.
I'm familiar with communities not too far from here who spent an extraordinary amount of money fighting the cell tower companies. And now they're just everywhere, right?
Yeah, it's a proliferation, and many communities appreciate the money that they get from them, you know? So it's like crazy, crazy. But, yeah, all right, well, it'll be interesting to see how that does unfold. As Kevin said, it's very complicated, and the people in Boston have to deal with it relatively soon. But anyway, okay, this is, the petition that has been put forth, as I saw a little bit of the meeting last, was it last night, the night before last? This is a petition by the woman who owns the winehouse, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And her original intent was just to try to get herself to be able to sell liquor as opposed to wine and beer.
All alcohol.
All alcohol. But we don't have any more.
No, we're at the maximum.
We're at the maximum.
Like state law, at 15,000, you can add one, but you have to wait for the census year of 2020 to incur. We're already at 15,000, I understand, but you have to wait till 2020.
Right.
To legally get the next one. Westboro already has way over their limit, and they've done it by Town Meeting vote, gone to the state legislature to get approval.
Interesting, interesting. Yeah. So the goal here, is there some issue with this? I mean, it sounds pretty straightforward. What's the risk?
Well, the, if it is a risk, I mean, there are others out there who may presumably would like to have the same advantage. And this article is only advisory, meaning it doesn't require the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature. But if it were to be approved, then it would show up on their agenda, and they would make a decision whether or not they are going to petition the state legislature. And it will also depend upon how this article is presented at Town Meeting, meaning what the motion is going to be under this article, if it's specific.
Specifically for that one.
Specific location, or if it's more broadly worded, the motion is more broadly worded, allowing for one additional license. And if the legislature, through their processes, get it through, which, by the way, I would estimate it would take a year to get it approved, then it would come back to the Board of Selectmen, and the Selectmen would say, oh, okay, we have one license, how are we going to handle this now?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I'm not going into that policy area.
And the fact that it would not be necessarily dedicated to the winehouse, anybody that wanted to have that one.
Well, she may be rewording.
Yeah.
The petition to say her exact address. So it can only be applied to that one exact address and not transferable to another address.
To the address and not the business? So even if she, so she couldn't move?
Correct.
Yeah.
According to Town Council. That's one way.
That's interesting.
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, and then recycling collection at condominiums. I know that there's some discussion as to whether or not curbside was an issue. I heard the attorney on TV the other night. So the definition of curbside collection, so now is everybody going to be required to move everything out to Washington Street? If that passed, all those condos, you know.
If it doesn't pass.
If it doesn't pass.
Well, I mean, you know, this is a complicated topic of discussion.
Yeah.
And it's also ripe for financial impacts and private property issues and.
The private property issues, these are all private roads.
Yeah, so we have a financial issue, we have private property, public entities going out to private property, and what the potential liability is for not only the contractor but also the town, and the indemnification of the association. The way this article is written is that the town would provide a curbside refuse and recycling pickup to condominiums, provided their trustees, their board trustees request such service. So some may not request it. We think that there are approximately 500 condominiums out there. They're changing all the time.
Yeah.
But we know for sure that there are more and more private roads that are out there that will be looking for this type of service. So, you know, in terms of budget, we asked Republic to come up with an analysis of how much it would cost and what the liabilities would be and all that, and they came up with a number of approximately $150,000 annually, more, which we had no appropriation for at the moment. So, again, depending how that motion rolls out, we, at the earliest we could implement it, I would believe, would be July 1st.
Hmm. There are all kinds of questions there, though. I mean, you know, the truck backs up and runs over, fill in the blank, not, I hope not a human being, but, you know, a tree, the, whatever.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, the carriers themselves have to have insurance to go anywhere.
Right.
The waste haulers have to have insurance. And then again, they have to be careful about where they go, and, because roads could get damaged, sometimes in new developments, roads aren't as well-built as if the town built them.
Yeah.
And they don't want the roads to be damaged or shrubs to be damaged, that type of thing. And this, and when you buy in a condo, it's buyer beware, be responsible for the refuse pickup.
I was going to say, I would assume that's part of their contract when they say buy-in, yeah.
But they'd like to save a few dollars for, because of the taxes they pay.
And I understand, I understand the argument from their standpoint, but in fact, I thought that was the whole thing about condominiums, was that that was the design of, you know?
Yes, it is.
So it seems to me that there's a real, that's a tough one. Okay, so we'll see how we do with that. Let's talk about land that's up for sale. That's the whole warrant, folks. That's all she wrote. Shouldn't take long. Let me just clarify, somebody did ask me this question. If in fact, we were going to have to go to a second night, which I think is highly unlikely, we would not be meeting on Halloween, but we would be skipping to Wednesday?
Probably so.
Yeah, okay. Because don't we have a bylaw or something that says we don't meet on Halloween?
Yeah, makes sense.
Because it doesn't work, we found out one year. All right. So we have some land that has gone up for auction due to non-payment of taxes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And there are, how many different sites?
There are four parcels, and these parcels date back to probably the early 1990s. And as part of the treasurer collector's activities, what she's doing is she's trying to clear the books of these parcels of land and hopefully get them being taxable.
Taxable, yeah.
Right?